This is the current one here. This. All right. Good evening. You are at a common council meeting, special council meeting, December 30th, 2024. It is 4:50 PM, City Hall. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
We have 11 voting members present.
Okay, I just, do we have any pre-registered?
No.
I have one, just a short announcement, just in recognition of our, the death of Jimmy Carter, former president, yesterday. I wanted to read one quote. Appropriate for tonight's, two quotes I'll read. "I'll never tell a lie, I'll never make a misleading statement, I'll never betray the confidence that any of you had in me, and I'll never avoid a controversial issue." Jimmy Carter. And then one other statement that I thought was appropriate for tonight. And I can't find it. I'll go with, "To be true to ourselves is, we must be true to others." So let's get going. Do we have any comments? No comments tonight from the public? We're bringing back an item that was failed in the last council meeting on, last week, the 26th. And we will be suspending the rules first since this is a special meeting that came about in the last 24 hours, business days. I would entertain a motion, I have a motion from Watson, second from Lukens.
You may begin voting. Do you want to vote yes? Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, first and only item on the agenda tonight is file number 23-1109-AE. It's a resolution from council. It's a reconsideration, reconsideration of the resolution, authorization to execute an inter-agency agreement with the Wausau Police Department in the amount not to exceed $400,000 to purchase services and incur expenses for day shelter, night shelter, transportation, case management, and other programs or services for people experiencing homelessness and related budget modification. So this was amended at the last meeting, and that was updated. Has everyone received a copy of the update? So what was published originally in the notice and in the packet did not contain this read-it-out version, but we have since added it. And without objection, I would entertain a motion on that as our item here tonight. We have a motion from Watson, second from, a motion from Larson, second from Watson. And I would offer, the first opportunity to speak was Alder Killian, who brought this back for reconsideration if you want, the floor is yours.
I would like to say something. When it says the police department will conduct a public participation process, does that mean just the police department will? I had understood that it would be a formal public participation process, or?
I think the anticipation was that it would be the PD as well as staff, appropriate staff, in order to conduct an appropriate RFP.
Okay, I'm wondering if it should say appropriate staff as well.
Which paragraph are you on?
Final piece, for the result. Do you want, I'm sorry, do you want to say staff or officials? Is staff and officials the same thing?
When it was presented, we talked about it being presented to the committee, and because it was brought up that the homeless particularly might be uncomfortable in large groups, but I understood it to be an actual public participation process, and I...
I mean, that's what it, that's what it says, conduct a public participation process, including obtaining input from those individuals experiencing homelessness, and for those that participate in the care for the homelessness if they choose to participate.
Now, keep in mind that I'm new on the council, fairly new, so I'm questioning if the city has a public participation process, that goes out in certain areas. And if the police have a public participation process, how will people be notified? I want this to be
Right.
a process whereby...
Sure, it's transparent.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So how is this stated appropriately?
I am, I'm going to say we would rely on previous experiences or lessons learned where we've done RFPs with economic development. And I'll, since we have Ben Graham at the podium, I'll let him
Sure.
help us out.
First of all, Happy New Year to everybody. And the chief unfortunately couldn't be with you tonight, and regretfully, he's not able to be here. But I would say that that can be done one of two ways, formally or informally, in that as we look at RFPs and we look to create a support system for our unhoused, it would behoove us to bring in some of their opinions on how is it best to serve them. And of course, our mission is to partner with the community, and we have partnered, especially through Tracy Rieger, in the support that she's been providing our unhoused community. And so we have informal means of reaching out to those that are impacted by homelessness and to invite them as much, as much as we can in the process going forward.
And I understand that you do, you can reach out, but how would groups know that, groups that are working with the homeless, how would they be formally invited to a process like that? I think that, that was the purpose, was when there was an issue that was going to be affecting the homeless, that those who are caring for them actively in the city and the homeless, how are you going, how would the police department reach out to all of those people? What would the process be?
Yeah, I would say that we know who the individuals are that are leading those particular organizations, and it would be a phone call, it could be an email, it could be, it just depends, depends upon the process that we have before us. So I don't have specifics, but those are reasonable ways for which we can reach out to them.
So I guess I just want it clarified, and I want to know that all of those people will be made aware that that's happening. So you're telling me the police department will make sure that everybody's notified appropriately every time there's an issue?
I would say that as I listened to the last meeting, Chief Barnes did make statements, something to the effect of this wanting to be a transparent process, and it is in line with our mission of partnering with the community, to invite stakeholders in during that process of formulating a, a plan to best meet their needs. So I can't say at this point, this is exactly what's going to happen, but that's going to be the spirit of our intent going forward.
Okay, well, I guess I just want to know that all of those who are addressed as far as caring for the homeless and the homeless who choose to participate will be notified and invited to participate when there is an issue.
Sure.
And I think we know who most of them are. I mean, we, we could list some of them, but, you know, I, I think we have in recent months have reached out and talked to some of them, for example, the Vicki Arness group, for example. We've got a judicar, we've got a task force that's meeting with the county. So we do have lines of communication to those, and I think maybe, maybe we could better formalize who gets those emails. Not all of them are going to be on an email, so we're going to have to maybe step through, how do we best reach them all and potentially have more than one session in one location, or multiple locations.
Oh, and I did want to say one other thing. I wanted to thank the rest of the council members for being here tonight. It was because I made an inadvertent error, and I appreciate your taking your time to be here this evening. We don't always get a chance to correct our mistakes in life, so thank you.
Thank you. First up, we have Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a few things here. When Chief Barnes was up here talking, he said that they were going to be a placeholder, and by that, for funds for the city. So that didn't necessarily mean that the full $400,000 was going to be going to the homeless, and Mary Ann did, I guess, say that was correct as well, that if there was an invoice coming through that was, needed to be paid, that was emergent, for example, for Motor Pool that we didn't expect to come in until 2026, some of those funds could be diverted back to Motor Pool. So is this going to be a placeholder, or is that full $400,000 going to be for the homeless?
Oh, so first of all, you know, we haven't received all of our billing from Catholic charities, so, you know, this was an estimate, so once we get that billing, we'll know the exact amount. So that's why this is up to 400,000. So it wouldn't, you know, like if we get more billing, it could be less than 400,000, because we have not received all of our invoices from Catholic charities. Then we will report this on our December 31st, 2024, report to the federal government as an obligation for whatever that balance is, once we get those Catholic charities invoices. And that will be what we've committed to. If we have, if we know we have money today for, let's say, once we get the final invoices, like we're waiting for some final invoices for corrosion control, things like that, we will determine if there's any money that we can show is related to Motor Pool. And then the Fed rules say that once we've obligated the funds, we can do change orders, we can modify our allocations during that two-year period of time, but if we haven't obligated it by December 31st of 2024, we can't. So when I was talking to the auditors, an obligation is not a spend, right? So we are reporting two numbers to the feds every quarter, what's obligated and what has been spent. So if we get to the end of 2025, and you'll, Finance is still going to get these monitoring ARPA reports that I've been sending out, you know, about monthly to Finance. So if we get to the last quarter of 2025, and we see, as I use as an example, for a firefighter position or some of these engineering contracts, if we recognize that the work is done, or let's say we have some vacancies, we will show that change in the fourth quarter to adjust our estimate, or, because in payroll, it's called an estimate, in contracts, it's called an obligation, we'll adjust the obligation to the correct amount, and then we will also adjust the obligation for Motor Pool. So if, for example, we have an engineering contract where we have $50,000 extra, we would make that change at that time, and we would go and look at what purchase orders we have outstanding that were issued prior to December 31st, 2024, that have the ARPA coding on them, because we've been coding them as ARPA-related purchase orders, and if we've made a payment on that, we will then insert that as our payment for the year and show an adjustment to the estimate down for a position or for a contract, and say it's no longer obligated. Because some of these contracts, for example, corrosion control, have a deadline within that 2025 to 2026 period. So in my conversations with our auditors, that was their recommendation of how to handle these modifications. And we can then, if you see, for example, we can bring this back, you can amend the contract anytime after, you know, just like we have been for Catholic charities, if we want to, we find something and we want to amend the contract, we can amend the contract during that time. It's really just getting this contract in place by December 31st so that we've got it obligated. Because once we get beyond that, we can't do anything anymore with this. We can't resurrect it after that, because we didn't have a contract in place. They allow you to modify a contract, they allow you, let's say, another example that they've used is when we were looking at these housing projects. If we had signed a contract with a housing and they said, after the 1231-2024 period, they went bankrupt, or they couldn't perform the work, we would be able to find a replacement during that two-year period. But we have to have the contract in place, and we've already received notice from Catholic charities that they're not going to sign that 2025 extension. So we had to do it now. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, but, so we don't really know if that's going to be 400,000.
Right.
Depending on what happens.
We have the, right, not to exceed 400,000.
Now, my other question then is, this money someplace.
To Catholic charities.
Right, that was 32,000, but the rest of that was already allocated to Motor Pool, and we're pulling that back from there, correct?
Well, it was allocated to Catholic charities, and then we were going to do this $32,000, and yes, you're correct, then, when we were looking at this, and when we were only going to give Catholic charities 32,000, we said, okay, we're gonna, Motor Pool will take up the balance of this. That's why we've signed all of these purchase orders and made the allocation for Motor Pool, because it's hard to anticipate all of the changes, all the dynamics that are going to take place in this two-year period.
Correct. So what I, my point is, is that everybody's making it sound like we use it or we lose it, and that's not the case. We had already allocated that to Motor Pool. We were never going to lose this 400,000.
That's true. That is true.
Just 32 potentially, but 40, the 400,000, no, that's been covered.
Right, what I'm saying is, 32 was allocated to the police department, the rest of that we had allocated previously to Motor Pool. So when people come up here or say, if we don't use it, we're going to lose it, that's not correct.
Right.
Okay.
And you wouldn't have to, I mean, I don't want to complicate matters, but you wouldn't have to do the whole 400,000. If you said, we only want to allocate 200, you could do that. And then Motor Pool would pick up the rest of it.
What I'm doing is clarifying so that this is transparent, so people don't think, oh my God, if we didn't use it, we would have lost it. Well, that's not the case.
Sure.
Okay.
But we would use it, lose it for homelessness. I think that's what the point Matt was trying to make.
Right.
And I think he made that pretty clearly, like, if you want to provide homelessness services and you don't use these ARPA funds, you're going to either have to use reserves, or you're going to have to find another revenue source.
Right, but we're going to have to use reserves or another revenue source for that money that we're taking from Motor Pool over to homelessness anyhow. So it's not like we're ahead.
Right.
We're not, we're just switching it from one place to the other. Either way, we would have had to put funding into one or the other. So we're not really ahead, it's just a shift of funds.
Yep.
And because there were several points that mentioned, we don't want to give this back to the feds. We were never going to give this back to the feds. Okay, so my last point is, on, on here, it says that, you know, they're going to be giving us receipts not to exceed $400,000 by December 31st of 2026. When the chief was here, I guess this goes back to conversation that it was said, okay, let's take it through Public Health and Safety, then it would go to Finance, then it would go to Council, and you had said, hey, the auditors might not like that, too many strings attached, so on and so forth. But I still need to think there's some monitoring that needs to be done. So what if it just went to Council? Because I, like I said at the beginning of this, I don't want to give the police department a blank check to do whatever they want with 400,000 dollars.
Sure. And I did, I, you know, I watched the tape from Thursday night, and if you look at the agreement, the inter-agency agreement, I tried to add some additional accountability by saying that the police department agrees to provide reports and supporting documents as requested by the mayor's office, Public Health and Safety Committee, or the U.S. Department of Treasury. So I added more of the inter-agency communication.
I don't think it should be as requested, I think there needs to be quarterly, I think, I think there needs to be...
We can modify that.
Yeah, I think we need to modify that, and not just say as requested, but it needs to be quarterly, and, and chief was okay with that. Chief was actually saying, hey, I don't want, I want to take this to Public Health and Safety, to Finance, but like I said, I don't think that they should have a blank slate.
It's no problem.
Mayor, it's on the back page, the first, the first paragraph.
Reporting?
Second paragraph on the back page.
Yep.
That is the reporting.
Agrees to provide reports and supporting documents.
Yeah, so there, I think Vicki's suggesting we add specific timetables.
Yeah, so I was looking at, I know he, I know the chief did indicate he would be able to do regular updates, and I don't remember if we put a period in there of a, of a monthly, or at the, the monthly council meetings, if we, are you looking to make another amendment?
Yeah, I'm looking to make an amendment with a definite timeline and not as requested.
Can you press your amend button, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. And what, let's see. Okay, we're, it says the police department will conduct a public, nope, that's not it. Go back here. Yep, the police department.
On the back of the agreement, second paragraph.
Right here. Okay, the police department agrees to provide reports and supporting documents as requested by the mayor's office, the public health, right. So rather than agrees to provide reports and supporting documents as requested by the mayor's office, the Public Health and Service Committee, Department of Treasury, no less than quarterly.
So you want to add in there no less than quarterly?
I guess what I would say is, provide reports, supporting documentation, public health and quarterly, you can just say on a quarterly basis.
To the mayor's office, Public Health and Safety Committee, and the U.S. Department of Treasury?
Right.
Okay.
I was just, I had used the word or, or the U.S. Department, because the U.S. Department of Treasury won't require quarterly reports on this, so I guess, I don't know if and and or is, if people are and/or, I don't know, because we're not going to send those reports to the U.S. Department of Treasury. But if they requested it, we win.
You can either than say it or as requested by the U.S. Department of Treasury.
Perfect.
Did you want and? And the U.S. Department?
Or as requested by the U.S. Department of Treasury. I think that was a great suggestion.
Okay. Sorry, I was trying to type.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, we have an amendment, motion for amendment. Is that posted yet? If you can move, stand by.
Okay, so to add into the sixth paragraph under the now there fore clause in the agreement to provide reports and supporting documents on a quarterly basis to the mayor's office, the Public Health and Safety Committee, or as requested by the U.S. Department of the Treasury.
Amendment motion is offered, any seconds?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, second from Alder Asmussen, okay. And I see no questions? Seeing none?
You may begin voting on the amendment. Motion passes 11 to 0.
And we are back to the main motion, and did we maintain the order of speakers? We did not.
I know that Lisa was first.
I think Alder Asmussen was after Tierney.
Alder Neal, I think was.
And then Alder Neal, so Alder Asmussen, did you have something?
I do, just, I guess, a footnote on the public.
I wasn't finished yet.
Oh.
Oh, she's still...
Stand by. Alder Tierney.
I have one last clarification. The very last part of this says about the Wausau Police Department agrees to remit invoices for payments no later than December 31st. Are there going to be invoices, are they going to be accountable before that for showing the expenditures on this 400,000?
Yes, so like I said, that could be part of the quarterly reports to Public Health and Safety, they can provide a list of disbursements each quarter, and of course, the, the amount will show up in the ARPA monitoring reports you get, so...
Would there ever have to be a request? I mean, if they want to spend $100,000, I don't think it's been first and asked forgiveness later.
Right. So I mean, historically, I think I'd mentioned, you know, when we establish a budget for something, if it's a short-term agreement, then the departments have the authority to enter into contracts for that amount. If it's a long-term agreement, then they don't, and it all depends on the type of agreement. Like I said, if it's an inter-agency agreement, they must come back to the council for approval. So it would really depend on that. You know, one thing that the mayor and I talked about, if you wanted more, I guess, accountability was, we could amend the agreement maybe after December 31st to add additional disclosures in there.
Isn't this an inter-agency agreement?
It is.
Okay, then why is it not following that, I mean, we have protocol, as you had said for that.
Right, so he's going to issue, it does require that he issue purchase orders. So I guess that would follow the regular purchase orders that we've been doing. For example, this morning, we signed the contract for, another last minute, for the city hall chamber improvements. So that contract was signed this morning, it didn't come, the contract itself didn't come to council because it's budgeted for, so that, and that was a, you know...
Interagents, that's an inter-agency agreement with...
No, that isn't, that's just a city agreement. But it, we don't, if the money is budgeted for, we don't bring contracts back unless there's another reason. for, we don't bring contracts back unless there's another reason. Like I said, they're multi-year or engineering contracts are the same.
So it doesn't follow a procurement process where if that's 25,000 or?
Well, the, that is, they've issued a purchase order, it's budgeted for, so the contract doesn't have to come here. That's what the procurement policy says.
Like I said last time, I'm unhappy, or I am not comfortable giving them 400,000 to do with what they want. I still think that should be monitored in some way. That's why I said, if it just comes to council. But I do not believe that we sit here and, like I said, they do it and then ask forgiveness. Because after you spend 100,000, it's gone.
Sure.
So I am not comfortable with that part, but that's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Alder Asmussen.
Thank you. I think that, I guess, with regard to the oversight piece, I think I'd heard the chief say a few times on Thursday that even though this is an inter-agency agreement, it was his intention to follow the procurement policy and then also report back and seek approvals for new programming or expanded programming or continuation of programming that we may have gaps in. So I think that we'll see that regardless. Even if that's not written into the agreement per se, I believe that we'll be seeing him because he wants us and Public Health and Safety and Finance to kind of walk hand in hand with him on that. Obviously, Public Health and Safety is getting monthly reports. My comment, though, was to the public engagement piece. Every month, Public Health and Safety works with the outreach coordinator and with agencies when they appear to discuss the status of all of our programming surrounding homelessness. And I just wanted to, as a footnote, offer, doesn't need to be written into the agreement, but if it would be helpful on the public engagement piece in terms of hosting listening sessions or getting the word out about listening sessions, Public Health and Safety would be happy to assist the police department with that as well. So if they wanted to host it in the context of one of our meetings, host it in the context of a special meeting, host it off-site somewhere, like at the library or over at CPC, you know, I think as a committee, we would be more than happy to assist with that piece also, since our committee has a predictable agenda and is typically covered by the media as well. So I mean, if that would be helpful, we would gladly assist Chief Barnes with that. But that does not need to be a part of the agreement. But I do think that we've gotten to where we wanted to go on Thursday, which was, you know, we've really lined up two dozen different uses for our ARPA dollars at various stages of completion. And I think that, you know, it was clear to us on Thursday that if we did not add this particular purpose to the list of those purposes, and then in 2025, we see a need to partner on a project or, you know, continue a service that was unfunded previously, this would give us the conduit by which to do that. We're not obligated to do it, but I think it would at least give us that freedom and that ability, some flexibility for us in terms of funding. And I think that's a good thing for us. So it is my intent to support this. And, you know, as we go forward, if Public Health and Safety can be of help to the program or to the police, we're happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I say I'm sorry for not being able to attend last week. In the interim, though, I did watch the video of the entire proceedings and appreciate everybody's input at that meeting. Based on what I've heard, last week, I would have supported this and I plan on voting for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
I just wanted to say that I have the same concerns that Alder Tierney does. I think there has to be accountability. And I was under the impression that a huge part of this money was going to be for the homeless. And it sounds as though it can be provided elsewhere as well.
No, that isn't what we said. So the inter-agency agreement indicates that they can only use it to serve the homelessness.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified.
Yes, and it's in the inter-agency agreement. And if you want to add more, you know, again, I think I was pretty clear in saying, my concern is that if we put all sorts of stipulations in here and regulations that's coming back to council for further approval, we haven't really obligated the funds because we're maintaining too much control. But, you know, we're in a difficult situation here because the inter-agency agreement, you know, we, it's new, it's untested, right? Like, we've never had to deal with these ARPA regulations before. So no one really knows. And as I said, when we look at compliance, who's judging our compliance? Our auditors are judging our compliance mostly. And then it would be the federal government if they wanted to come in and look at our documents. So I'm trying to give advice to the best of my abilities, but it's difficult right now because we don't really have any longstanding protocol on how to handle this type of grant reporting and this type of obligating of funds ever in the, you know, 30 years that I've worked here. This is new. So we're doing the best we can.
I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
So I guess to where it could else go, it would only go somewhere else if this inter-agency agreement failed to produce the results that we're looking for. So they can't spend it on ticket machines or whatever. All right. Seeing no further questions, just a reminder, this is a budget mod requires two-thirds, which would be eight votes.
So you may begin voting on the item as amended. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you for your precision of thought and economy of expression tonight. And I would end it on one thing. I found my quote from Jimmy Carter like four times in a year with that. Public comments, we'll open it up for public comments. Seeing none. "The measure of a society is found in how they treat their weakest and most helpless citizens." Another quote from Jimmy Carter. I've got three in one night here. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion from Hanky, second from Lukens, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Ben, can you stay? We need to sign this tonight. Okay.